Scrambling around crazy today, but...
That's all right.
Believe me when I say it's been one of those days. We're here, it's 2:00, we can start. So, thanks for coming back. Like I said, Bryn's gonna join us today, just on the recording side, she's not involved in any decision we make, but I wanted to hear what you guys had to talk about. My apologies, John and Charles aren't here, but they'll... What's that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
John and Charles.
That's Glenn and Charles.
That's why we do this, so that they can see this before we have our discussions on who we're gonna endorse. We'll do it very similar to last time, I'll give you guys each a couple minutes to begin, and then launch into some questions, and see where we go from there. I can't remember who went first last time, but we'll have Josh start.
Sure.
Take about 3 minutes.
3?
Yeah. And Jim will wave at you when it's time, and then we'll let Abby have a shot too.
Okay.
So, tell us what's happened since the last time you guys were here, since we narrowed it down to 2 people.
Well, since what's happened last time, I guess what I wanted to talk about was, you know, just to share with all of you, well, first of all, thanks for having us back. You know, I've worked really hard at the county the past 4 years to make sure that we're doing the things necessary during a very historic economic downturn to make sure the county's delivering services. So, one of the big things that has happened over the past couple of weeks is we've been in our budget deliberations, and, you know, the financial structure that I inherited when I came into office as Commissioner was absolutely not sustainable. We talked at the last editorial board meeting about our union contracts. My number 1 priority for my, you know, for the next few years is to making sure the county puts sustainable contracts in place that we can afford, that compare our county employees where applicable to the local job market. The county, before I became Commissioner, was spending through reserves to balance a budget. We have really been focused in a collaborative framework, working between the Board of County Commissioners and our separately elected officials to make the county an effective provider of services. And we have, although, you know, I hear from my opponent that the county's increased its budget, the budget that matters at the end of the day is our general fund balance and our general fund budget, and that's because that's where your local sales and property taxes go. And we've made reductions in the last 4 years of 15 percent, $14 million. If the county is still dedicated to keeping our community safe through both our unincorporated services and through the regional services we provide. And I'm just proud of what we've been able to get done. This is a very complicated organization, and it's not an organization that, you know, that I think somebody can just come into and dictate to others changes. I think you need to have a collaborative approach, which I feel I have. And I'm also, quite honestly, really proud of the things that we've been able to accomplish the last 4 years. You know, the Rolling Hills acquisition, building the new YMCA in Silverdale, and when we, when we entered into this partnership 4 years ago to build the new Y in Silverdale, we looked not just at the county and in Silverdale, but we looked county-wide. So, my goal is to figure out how we can eventually build Ys in South Kitsap and North Kitsap so that our entire community serves. This is a model for a public nonprofit partnership that's dramatically transforming our community. And, and I know for those 2 projects, Rolling Hills and the Y, you know, those projects wouldn't have got done if it wasn't for my leadership. I didn't run for county commissioner to sit in my office and have people bring reports to me and to just vote every couple of weeks, I ran for county commissioner to get things done. And I've been able to get things done even during challenging economic period, and I believe I've earned the respect of community leaders. I feel I've done so in a collaborative way, bringing people together, and I look forward to serving another 4 years to continue in the good work that I've been able to accomplish here in Kitsap County. Thank you.
Well, thanks again for having me, and I want to thank you for your endorsement in the primary, as well with Josh. And if you guys weren't aware, the other 2 candidates did step up and endorse me for the race. And really, Josh and I do have some disagreements about things within the budget. The reason that I'm running is because I expect for our core functions to be consistently funded. I expect for those services to be 100 percent consistently funded, which means that the Sheriff's Department needs to be staffed first, we need to maintain our roads and reduce congestion, and we need to focus on providing basic county functions. Currently, our county administration building, being closed on Fridays, has 15 days to process transactions if they're open in a month. That doesn't create a, a framework where businesses want to come and do business in Kitsap County, frankly. So, what worries me is that while we're talking about all these great projects, and I think that the Y is a great project, and I think that a lot of these other projects with Rolling Hills Golf Course are wonderful as well, but the problems that we're finding is that we have to fund the extras on these things. So, with the Rolling Hills Golf Course, the millions of dollars that are going to come with the environmental improvements that need to be done, things like that have to be factored in when we're discussing the other things that we're going to expand upon within the county. And so, that's, I think, where you're going to see that, you know, the incumbent and I disagree on some things, is that I really believe that we have to focus on getting our sheriff's deputies back up to a reasonable level, we have one of the lowest staffed departments in the state. And we've seen that crime is on the uprising, you can, you can tell from the sheriff's review that that's what he says, that's what's happening. So, that needs to be funded first and foremost, and I don't think that we're seeing that. I know that my opponent believes that, that things are going fine, and he's really trying to project that things are going fine, but I think if we read even the stories that you guys have written, we can see that the budget is not fine. They have spent through reserves. We have a $500,000 revenue shortfall, and the projected budget is very different than the actual budget. And so, these are the problems that I'm seeing, and this is why I decided to run, is because I think that we need to create benchmarks for these departments to have that show that each program has met a certain degree of providing service for the county, and that way they'll be able to come to us with what is mandated and what is discretionary in a list, so we can go down the list and we can decide which things are going to affect the public in the worst way, and which things are going to really be beneficial for the public that we need to keep. I think unless we structure our budgets very similar to the Health District's budget, where we have an RCW attached to every mandated service, we will be unable to do that. And I think that we really need some leaders to step up and start making that a first priority. I've been watching the budget discussions, it's frustrating to me that citizens in the panel are saying we need to focus on these 7 to 9 percent cuts. We were here today to discuss what those cuts were going to be and how they were going to affect the public. And there's not any answers. They're not getting answers for that. And that's scary to me because it means that our department heads are not focused, they haven't been made to be focused on doing these 7 to 9 percent cuts, which frankly, we have to take, we have to do them because it may get worse. But, anyway, that's why I'm running, and I thank you guys for your, for your time to answer these questions.
I'm gonna ask you one follow-up, and then I want you to respond to 2 things that she said.
Sure.
You were talking about setting up a structure that attaches budgets to RCWs, like the Health District does. Is that your understanding, that the county has the authority to do that, or that would be a state function, that the legislature has to make that decision, is that correct?
The Citizens Budget Committee came in and recommended these suggestions, and they've contacted me, that they have asked for the county commissioners to implement these, and they told me that they were disbanded because they didn't like the solutions that were proposed, and that it was very possible for us to go in and put those RCWs into place for each department. And I don't see any reason why we couldn't. It's, it's not something, I mean, it's definitely work, but it's something that has to be done, otherwise we're randomly cutting things with no benchmarks for what they're producing.
As I said, I'm asking, what does the RCW say that you're pointing towards?
No, what I'm saying is each mandated service is attached to an RCW, so line by line you can show that these services are in fact mandated.
Okay.
And that's what I'm talking about, is that the budgets by department need to show what is mandated versus what's discretionary, so that it's obvious for us what we know should be cut.
Okay. So, you wanna see a line-by-line budget?
Yes.
Since this is, under state law, we do this, this is, we have chosen to do this under state law, that's what you're asking for?
Right. Yes, exactly.
Okay, why don't we show this clear. You raised a, there's 2, one of them was when Abby mentioned a revenue shortfall?
Right.
And you kind of gave a little nod, you wanna respond to that?
Well, I'd like to maybe follow up on a couple of these budget mischaracterizations. First of all, I'm on the Health District Board, and this process of looking at discretionary versus mandated programs, that was something that I helped design on the Health District Board. And frankly, we view that model this year as we have designed our budget process, we have brought back our budget in a program basis. When I was a Commissioner, my first year, the budget process and the budget development was brought back on a department-by-department basis. So, you would get everything for the jail, everything for the prosecutor, everything for the auditor. We have, over the last couple of years, worked to develop a program basis, and when you get those programs, and all those sheets are on our county website, we've given them out, many reporters for The Sun have received them, you see what things are mandated or not. Now, there's a lot of choices when you have something that's mandated on what level of service should you provide. It's mandated that the county, every couple of years, go out and assess property. That's something the assessor's mandated to do, but you can have some discussion about how quickly you get there and how often you do it. There is some flexibility. So, we're doing a lot of those things. But, what I don't appreciate are a couple of things. Number 1, with regards to the year that, that we're in the middle of right now, revenue projections go up and down during the year. My job is to manage around it, and ensure as I'm sitting here, we're gonna finish this year with a balanced budget, not dipping into reserves. I guarantee that. That's active management. Number 2, I wanna hear specifics about what's discretionary and what you wanna cut. We just left a forum this morning where you couldn't come up with 1 item. Number 3, I believe that we need to have a collaborative working environment. You know, we can talk about, and I think everybody would like to have more deputies, everybody would like to have more prosecutors, everybody would like to have more parks. County government is tied together, and I'll give you one example of that. You could have more deputies on the street, but if you have to reduce your bed capacity from 420 to 300 for felonies, you can arrest people as much as you want, but if folks are getting out early, or if you're not having the follow-through for justice, the system is breaking down. This is a system. And, you know, and I know this personally as much as anybody, having lost my sister to being murdered a year ago, and still waiting a year later for justice. I take it very serious, every budget decision I make, and I really don't appreciate the fact that, you know, over the past couple of months, I've heard from my opponent the fact that I don't take keeping our community safe seriously. One of the things... I do that every day I go to work, and what I'm working on right now, David, as we're looking at the county's budget, is trying to find cuts where we can and to preserve those core functions.
That was actually, there was 2 questions along that that I wanted to ask to both of you, the 2 that we've been reporting on, that I think are 2 of the most important, are the Sheriff's Office budget?
Right.
And then the Prosecutor's Office budget.
Yes.
Now, what are your opinion on, if I understand this correctly, the last time after Boyer gave his presentation, he's gonna be coming back this month, you asked for, you wanted priorities for him, whether it's deputies, whether it's beds, whether it's... I'd like to know what your respective opinions are about what those priorities should be. On the Prosecutor's Office question, I would like to know your thought on what Russ Howey presented, do you think that is a good way when he's coming in with all these revenue increases rather than cuts the office itself? It seemed like that was his interpretation of what he had been asked to do, and I'd like your opinions on both of those things. We'll start with Abby this time.
Well, and I, and I don't, I don't mean to, I wanna get back to the fact that I've noticed when I listened to the last editorial review, that every time I say something, he gets a chance to respond and rebuttal to what I said.
Anytime you wanna say something?
And, and that's what I wanted to clarify with you, is there's a lot of things in that statement that I take offense to, because the county commissioners ordered 7 to 9 percent across the board cuts. They have chosen to take a standoff approach to those budget cuts, and that's frustrating to me, because when they're asking me specifically what I would cut, they have to admit that they haven't specifically said anything that they were going to cut. I have no problem listing that I think that parks departments are discretionary, and that obviously our Sheriff's Department needs to come first. Our county commissioners have a county administrator that they didn't used to have, and a county lobbyist that they didn't used to have. These are all areas that can be adjusted, but I take offense to the fact that when they can't produce light items, they expect me to. The second thing is, when we're talking about core functions of government, we let the incumbent go on about all of these wonderful things that he sent for our county, which are great things. I like the YMCA. I don't like to play golf, but some people do. It doesn't mean I don't like those things, but what it means is how are we going to pay for them? And when we're talking about what he chooses to cut versus what I choose to cut, he's not telling you anything he's gonna cut, all he says is, "I'm going to get all these great things for our county." And there is an expense attached to that. When we lose property tax from the Rolling Hills Golf Course, and in turn we're supposed to get excise tax, that doesn't go into the general fund.
Yes, it does.
And it makes it so that, and it makes it so that our home prices when we go to sell our homes are higher. And what I'm getting at is, I want that clear line drawn for the voters, that when we're proposing all these wonderful expenses to the public, they're not free. They have to come from somewhere. And when we're talking about our Sheriff's Department and being low-staffed on deputies, that's not an attack. But when a woman, when I go in to cash my check, tells me she waited 20 minutes when her bank got robbed, and that she was very disappointed in that, and that the man walked out because he knew they weren't coming, that tells me we have a problem. So, that's, that's basically what I wanted to say, is that I think we really need to draw that line. I recognize that when we're getting all of these things, there is a cost to that. They're not all free regardless of what they wanna tell you. And for various reasons, they're not all free. Like I said, one of them's the Rolling Hills Golf Course with the environmental impacts. So, anyway, back to your question, Sheriff's Office, say that one more time, you're saying they ask for specific...
Yes, yes, the understanding the director was given was to come back with priorities.
Right.
As far as what that's gonna be, I'd like to know your opinion on what those priorities are.
I think deputies need to be a number 1 focus, because we are at a critically low level. I think we do have a little bit excessive administrative in those areas, but the sheriff does set that budget. I think that what needs to happen is, we may need to pull out of other areas. I think 7 to 9 percent is not a fair way to go about it, because that's acting as though the Sheriff's Department is equal to the parks, and frankly, it's not. I mean, that's the reality of it, is that the Sheriff's Department needs more funding than the Parks and Rec Department does. And so, I think when they're asking for that money, we really do need to go in and look at things like, you know, what are our response times to these, to these incidences? The Corrections Guild and the Sheriff's Deputies Guild endorsed me, and they've told me about these problems. And they're very frustrated with how much overhead there has been, and that no one's listening to them on ways to restructure the departments. So, I think we need to start listening to the working guys a little more.
So, as far as the Sheriff's Office, what you're saying is, they should not be held to the same 79 percent standard?
No, I don't think so.
They should not have to think about that in their, in their presentation?
Right.
And in other, and that would be borne by another department within the county?
Yes.
That, that's... Why don't you go first?
I'll answer your question.
And then we'll come back, and then we'll come back and ask the Prosecutor's question to both of you.
Oh, so you wanna break 'em up?
Let's do that, maybe so.
Well, we asked, this is how our, the county's general fund budget's set up. In June, when we set out the budget call letter, we asked each department to bring back 2 levels of cuts, 7 and 9. The 7 percent cut would have balanced the county's budget and would have allowed us to add $1 million to reserves. It represents a $5.7 million cut from our 2011 base. That's what we asked departments to do, and we asked the 9 percent, because as everyone around this table, I believe, understands, the county commissioners, we can delegate to the sheriff, the prosecutor, the courts, how much money they have, but at the end of the day, they have a programmatic ability to spend that money as they see fit. So, we wanted to provide an opportunity for the Board of Commissioners to be able to sit down, review these cuts, and get some honest recommendations back from the departments. Now, the, the fact that our sheriff decided to take 100 percent of his cuts in deputies, and no cut in admin, no reshaping in terms of the ratios of lieutenants and sergeants to deputies, I think the fact that we've asked for the 7 to 9 percent cut has provided a public discussion about what's appropriate and what should be priorities. That's why we did it this way. And with regard to the Prosecutor's Office, Prosecutor's Office and Parks, along with the county jail, were 3 departments that followed an option in our budget call letter to provide recommendations to meet the cuts, either through cuts or through additional revenue. So, we're able to keep our 420-bed capacity in the jail, not because we're cutting, but because our Chief of Corrections, Ned Newland, and his staff have found a contract to be able to bring in about $900,000 in revenue. That was the option that the prosecutor sought, and to a smaller degree, Parks as well. So, I share all that with you as, as a backdrop, because the meeting that I had yesterday with my staff, and I, I told you the 5.7 million would allow us to sock away $1 million in addition to reserves. We need to be able to increase reserves. So, what that means is, if we decided this year we didn't wanna add 1 nickel to reserves, we just wanted a balanced budget without dipping into reserves, the real cut's 4.7 million. The meeting I was in yesterday, the Board of County Commissioners going through and cutting departments greater than 7 percent, which we did for the majority, for a significant number of departments and outside agencies, we have come up with $4 million in cuts. We're $700,000 away from balancing the budget without dipping into reserves. And that's without accepting the revenue from the Prosecutor's Office or looking at any cuts in the Sheriff's Office. Now, the discussion we're gonna have as a board is not whether or not we're going to cut sheriff's deputies for the jail less than Parks discretionary, we absolutely are gonna cut them less. I, I know that the priority of the community is keeping our community safe, and that's why every year I think Commissioner, we have cut law and justice significantly less in other functions. We're gonna do that again this year. But what we need to do as a board is find out what level of cuts is appropriate, because we need to work to build back reserves over time. And frankly, as we discussed on the phone the other day, David, some of these revenue options, like the contract in the jail, is a one-time option. When that contract goes away, that's $900,000 of revenue the county won't have. So, we have to determine, do we cut a little more in 2011 and put a little more in reserves so that we have a softer landing or more resources for 2012 and 2013? That's, we're really working hard to manage the county so that we're making decisions today that help ensure that the county has a sustainable future. So, with regards to, you know, the sheriff and his specific recommendations, we have a meeting tomorrow, following up with him, I believe. Actually, if it's not tomorrow, it's a following, we have 3 or 4 departments tomorrow. And I know a big part of the discussion, as was, you know, highlighted in the budget briefings, is what are the priorities and what are the other options?
You sound like when, when we started answering this question, you didn't like the idea that the lawyer brought this, all deputies cut. And so, that's, I guess, what I'm trying to get at there.
I, I, I think it's, I think it's something typical in counties when there's this negotiation between the separately elected officials and the county commissioners, you know, "Don't cut my budget because this is the most popular thing." I have a lot of respect for our county sheriff and his team, and I look forward to working with him, putting together a responsible budget that is gonna make reductions where appropriate while planning the things that are core priorities for the community. And, you know, does it bother me that the sheriff wanted to get the attention of the public to underscore the fact that the county's making cuts? Absolutely not. But now it's time where the rubber meets the road, and we need to make the decisions that are the most appropriate for, for the public. That's what we're gonna do in the coming weeks. Okay?
Real quick, there's something, part of the reasons that the Corrections Guild endorsed me was these contracts that they're taking for the jail, they're understaffing the corrections officers so that they can pump much more money back into the budget, but they don't have enough corrections officers to staff the contracts. That's the problem that we're having in these areas, is that they're under, they're underfunding the workers. There's not enough deputies, there's not enough corrections officers for what they're doing to get more money for their budget. The second thing is, to say that reserves haven't been spent, and then to turn around and say, "We need to build back up reserves," tells me that reserves have been spent. Also, the Auditor's Office told me the reserves have been spent. So, we have eaten through our reserves. I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, we've been in a significant recession, and, and I think most public agencies, when you're in a severe recession, in, you know, 2008, 2009, when we had the stock market under 5,000, and we had Bear Stearns and Lehman collapsing, and sales tax revenue, no jurisdiction to contract, that's when you rely on reserves, because times are difficult. The problem was, before I became Commissioner, the Board, the county commissioners, was spending through reserves during the good times, and that's what we needed to correct. And when Commissioner Bauer came on board, and Steve has as much budget experience as anybody in the county or in the region, we knew that our challenge was to, to get revenues and expenses in line, and we knew a big part of that would be eventually renegotiating these union contracts, which unfortunately, we were right in the middle of, because our prior board signed 3-year contracts. What none of us anticipated, and what has been very challenging, but I think we've done, as well as anybody, to manage through, is the fact that we are in the deepest recession that this country's faced in several generations. And I, I think we've done everything possible to, you know, to make decisions during these challenging times that are really appropriate. And, you know, Abby, you've been pretty clear, and your supporters have said the county shouldn't have done the Y project, and we shouldn't have bought, you know, Rolling Hills. I stand by those investments, because when we put them together, the number 1 priority that we had in our mind was, is this fiscally responsible? The answer's yes. Is this gonna help our community? The answer's yes. And I'm not going to sit and, and not be a county commissioner that's gonna work hard to get things done just because the naysayers in your, in your community don't want anything to happen.
They don't want their property taxes increased, that's what it's about, actually.
But I, I want, let me, let me give you a chance to respond to that, because you have mentioned you like the Y project, Josh is saying people who support you don't like the Y project. What is, if you, if you would've had the opportunity to do that, would you have done it the same way? Do you, I mean, clearly, Y is a good theme, I think, if I'm hearing right, but was it done the appropriate way? What's your...
Um, I, actually, I, I think I probably would've done the same thing with the Y. The things that concern me on that is, I have been looking through county documents, and I can't seem to find anything about what they're paying for the land. I can see the length of the lease, I can't see what the Y is paying on the land. The other question that I have is that the expansion of the Y is to such a degree that I've been told by many people, it's going to do completely away with the community center, because there's no more room for the library. So, they have decided to expand that beyond the scope of what was explained to the public. And so, these are more expenses incurred than what we were told at the beginning. And so, my question isn't, would we have done the YMCA project, it's, could we have done it in a more budgetary fashion to where we weren't spending so much county money on it? That's, that's more my concern. I mean, I, I think the YMCA is a great place, I just think that when people are facing losing their homes, we have to prioritize, and I, and I don't feel that we've done that.
But, let's be clear, when I began working on this project almost 4 years ago, and when I talked about the opportunity to build a Y in Silverdale, and I looked at the Gig Harbor Y, which I thought was a spectacular model that could help thousands of families and teens and seniors in our community, nobody thought this project was gonna happen. The county stepped up and we donated the land, and we put in the first $1 million of capital money, money that could only be spent on capital projects. In fact, the prior Board of Commissioners wanted to spend that money on a new district court, and we decided that we would invest this money instead in the campus and in the, and in the Y project. What we're getting back for that return is a roughly $22 million community asset that every Friday night is gonna be open for free for teens, for free, and will give back, we think, every year, roughly half a million dollars in scholarships to the community. You know, I, we, we had board members from our local Board of Realtors, folks who gave $10,000 to my opponent as their first contribution, come down and say the county shouldn't have made that investment. And it's hard for me to believe that the largest supporters financially of my opponent, who are coming to Commissioners' meetings, saying that the county shouldn't have done the Rolling Hills deal, that we shouldn't have done the Y deal, that there isn't some connection here. And everybody knows that this campus project, we are working collaboratively with the library to eventually have them on-site. And frankly, I don't think it's a problem, the fact that the Y's bigger than what we originally thought. It's bigger because it's more successful and it's gonna serve more people.
Can you give us, give us an update on where things stand as far as the library goes? Because that was meant, they were in here just last week, and it was, it was mentioned, and it said it's still not decided on, on exactly what, how that's all gonna work and fit together. But there, I've heard the same thing that Abby's heard, there's some threat that this thing has grown and squeezed the library on what their plans may have, may be...
Well...
How are you...
Here, here's where I'm at on it, you know, the, is the Y, you know, bigger than what we originally thought? Absolutely. This has been the most successful fundraising effort in the history of Kitsap County, and we're gonna serve more people with a larger facility. So, I, if...
But it doesn't cost somebody else? I guess that's what it is.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't cost the county...
Is that gonna come to cost somebody else?
The footprint...
Not in the library, is it?
Well, the, the footprint for the Y's absolutely the same. Absolutely the same.
The parking issue.
The parking issue, we, in our contract and our agreement with them, we've capped it at 400 stalls. In terms of planning for the library, anytime that the library, Fire District School District goes out for a bond measure, I'm not aware of the fact that when you're going out for a bond measure for building a new high school, you go out and you design the school before you get the bond revenue. And I told the library a couple of months ago that I would not entertain exploring and spending county resources or the library expending more resources designing a library when we don't know if there's a capital of dollars to fund it. And I'm pretty optimistic that if the library measure passes in a couple of weeks, that we're going to be building a new library on the community campus side adjacent to the Y. Do I know specifically where it is, or the size of it, or, or what it's going to look like? Absolutely not. But that's what the vision of the community is, and the county signed a letter of intent over a year ago, saying that we're committed to making that dream a reality. So...
There's something I want to comment to really quick, because it's been mentioned a couple of times, and I'm sorry, but I just find it funny. The Realtors' money. First time I met Josh was when I was walking in to interview for the $10,000 that he didn't get, that I got. The Harborside condominiums...
Is it the campaign contribution?
Yes. And I just want that to be public knowledge, that he walked out of that office right when I walked in. And the other thing is that when we're talking about the Harborside condominiums down here, the two consultants have been two of his biggest donors, and I want the public to know that. He's already twice as much money as I have. So, when we're talking about these issues, if it's going to be insinuated that I have all these people that are just, you know, making things difficult for him, he was offered and asked for the exact same amount of money that I received. It's sour grapes because he didn't get it.
Okay, let's stop right here. I do want, we, we'll let you answer.
Sure.
Did you also solicit that? And then, let's try to just send the issues...
I know, I just wanted to go through that because it's been said a couple of times.
Yeah. What, what's your question, David?
Is it true, is it true that you solicited that contribution also, like Abby said?
Yeah, the, the Realtors invited me to be interviewed for their endorsement.
And they asked you?
Now, hold on. I, you know, it was a straightforward question, that's very simple.
I shouldn't have interrupted, I feel bad.
That's what I wanted to ask.
Well, I, you know, the, the issue here for me is the fact that, you know, when I ran for commissioner four years ago, special interest money that was raised opposing me was the greatest amount of money ever raised in Kitsap County in the commission race. Realtors put in $50,000. A lot of that was independent expenditures. You know, when I make my decisions, and what I'm very clear with people and about is the fact that when I make my decisions as county commissioner, I make my decisions because they're the decisions that Josh Brown thinks is the best call. I don't always agree with my supporters in the environmental community. I've been endorsed by our local homeowners association. I don't always agree with them. I like to think that they're endorsing me and that they're supporting me because they think I'm a reasonably bright person, that I'm a good listener, and I'm willing to work with people to solve problems. And I guess what I've heard throughout this campaign, whether it's reopening the admin building on Fridays, which is discretionary, whether it's the appeals process, whether it's taking the same line on Rolling Hills and the Y, what, what I've heard is the fact that my opponent basically says what the Realtors wanted to say. And everybody knows that I don't agree with everything that my supporters say, but I've built my reputation on integrity and on making the calls that I think are the right ones. And frankly, if, if folks want to support me for those reasons, terrific. If they want to support me for ulterior motives, I don't want to have their support.
Okay. I think that brings us back to some more separate questions. And one that I'm going to move us to is the legacy partnership. This is, it seems like this is maybe the, it's still pending, still going through the process. I'd like to know, as this, as, as this works out, and we're, we're seeing a few more of the details, the numbers, we had a column that talked about the strictly taxing side of it from what our columnists kind of tried to explain some of those things, and I, I don't want to dwell on that, but I would to know where you are both at on this project as far as whether you, whether you still support the concept, whether this is a, you know, long-term benefit to the county, and is it worth what it will take, what it will cost? Because there's at least an initial, there's some tax revenue that would not be there until the community port gamble is built up.
Right.
In my understanding, that is, that there is some trade-off there, and whether you're comfortable with doing that right now. Is this a good time to be doing it? Do you have any confidence that it would be there later? Kind of an overall opinion on where the project is at right now? We'll let Josh start.
Well, first of all, the, the 7,000 acres that Olympic Property Group is looking at, consolidating, developing over time, and cluster development where they get a density bump, most of that property right now is in timber-protected status.
Right.
And I'm sure that you've seen those numbers. So, we're not talking about a lot of revenue coming into the county right now. It's pretty marginal.
Correct.
I've supported the North Kitsap Legacy Partnership to date, and I've supported the, the conversation by trying to figure out how we can make this partnership a reality because I think there, there are some significant opportunities for Kitsap County, preserving permanently open space, clustering development, looking at how we can build high-quality communities. Are there a lot of details to work out? Absolutely. And I, where, where I'm at is, until I know exactly what's being recommended in terms of how much density, where it's located, how we're going to pay for the road infrastructure, you know, what, what the environmental impacts are on Port Gamble Bay, I, I'm not prepared to say it's a great project or it's not because the honest-to-gosh truth is that there's a lot of details that have been talked about peripherally, but they haven't been put in a proposal. And when I see that proposal, I'm going to work through that proposal and figure out what makes most sense for our community and make the call on it. But I think it's, it's responsible of the county to begin to have a conversation about it, and that's why I've supported, you know, dedicating, you know, limited but some county resources to begin to have this conversation because I think this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get it right. And it means we have to get it right for the entire community. And if we don't get it right, then I'm not going to support the final deal.
When you say get it right, are you, you said, you said you're comfortable with some limited resources at this stage, up that planning money and all the rest of it? Do you have something in your head on what you would be comfortable with if it comes to the situation where the county is going to be on the hook for infrastructure up on the north end, some of the road projects that you're talking about? Where is your comfort level as far as that goes, what the county maybe is responsible for?
Well, in, in our draft memorandum of understanding, I believe we have language in there that, that essentially says that the project has to pay for itself. So...
Is that something you want to, you're saying you'll stand by that?
Well, I think I was the one who recommended that the Commissioner Bauer to put it in an agreement, so yes, as, you know, that, absolutely. The development had, we, we can't have a development that the rest of the county taxpayers subsidize. But I think there is a way to do this. You know, I, I do have some initial concerns of putting 100% of the increased density right on the Port Gamble bluffs. Port Gamble Bay, when we look at the parts of our, our county that are most important from a habitat perspective to the health of future sound, most folks rate Port Gamble Bay as the number-one critical area because of the herring spawning areas. So, we, we, we have to get it right, and, and until, you know, I see the specifics, then that's where any project, the rubber meets the road. But remember, the, the process that we've set up is to look at this as a developer's agreement, so that the developer provides a proposal, the county commissioners look at it, we vet it, the final approval authority is with the county commissioners. So, you know, this is going to be an intense process, it's going to be a lot of work, but, you know, I grew up in North Kitsap, and I think the possibility of preserving 1,000 acres of open space for trails, and, and if we can cluster development in a pretty progressive work-thinking way, we have to explore that.
Okay. Abby, knowing you haven't been quite as involved in all of the process at this point, as a concept, what do you think of this agreement? What would you be willing to commit to if you were in this, even if I have to make this decision when, when the contract's solid or worked out in the coming months?
Well, I'm not okay with the taxpayers being fiscally responsible for another project like this. I'm concerned about environmental impacts as well, with the tribes having problems with some of the things going on down there. I think we really need to be careful what we're doing and how that is going to impact the public in the future, just like I was saying with the Rolling Hills Golf Course area. We have to make sure that the environmental impacts don't come back to bite us later. We don't want to end up with another Harborside condominium mess. We want to make sure that we're very aware of what our liabilities and what our costs are going to be upfront. So, in that, I agree, I agree with the incumbent. I think that that needs to be very clear. What worries me is that I don't see them actually doing that with other projects, and so I'm hoping that that truly does stay the case, that we really do, if we're going to do this project, don't do it on the backs of the taxpayers. So, I mean, really, on that project, I'm trying to think how much further I can get into it with you. All of these projects, like the YMCA and Abraham Heritage Park, I think these are all great projects. I think it, it makes Kitsap County a great place to live, and I think we always need to keep those in minds and take those opportunities when we can. But what concerns me overall in this entire election is that we're doing this at a time when everyone else has had to cut their budgets back. And what he said is that, you know, we've had all these downturns in the stock market and this and that. So, first and foremost is not the government's budget. It's the budget of every single person in this county. And if they can't maintain their homes and they don't have their jobs, we can't start building all these facilities and expect them to pay for it in the long run. So, that's my position. I mean, I know that's a roundabout way, but just basically, I'm not going to approve anything that fiscally puts the taxpayers in a position to, to either not know what they're getting or know what they're getting and be that it costs them money in property taxes.
Does anyone else want to jump in here?
I'm actually talking about the people outside.
Oh.
I wanted you to have an opportunity to, because obviously, you were both quiet, and you said that they contacted you, and the, your comment, Abby, was that they're feeling like they're not being heard. So, I'd like to ask your opinion on it, and then yours as well, Josh.
Yeah, sure.
Well, the citizens of the Chico Creek Water Basin have invited Josh and I both to numerous events at their home to go over their issues. And what their issues are is with the Yewan mining project. And they are, it started off with the land use appeals process. He was saying the Realtors were upset. Well, there was a lot of other people upset, and this was one of those groups. It was a citizens group. They were very upset that the commissioners took themselves out of the land use appeals process at a time when it was politically favorable for them but not, not favorable for the people in that neighborhood. So, they started contacting both of us to talk to us about it. And I know that they've met with Josh on one occasion. They invited us both to come down and talk with them when they were picketing over at DCD last Monday. And I think they were really trying to stay nonpartisan and, and really, you know, see who was going to be upfront with them. And I told them, you know, this, this, this specific proposal, I'm not sure that I would agree or disagree with, but the point they made about wanting Yewan to exit out the south end of this property would impact the environment less, and it would be better for all of the communities involved to do that. There were various reasons that they felt that my opponent wouldn't support that, and that was the point of disagreement. So, I think that they, even after speaking to me, were still pretty okay with things. What happened was, I guess there was something that happened on Sunday, because I received a call from one of the gentlemen out there about that and said, "I had this altercation or whatever, and I want a list of when you guys are going to be at what places." And so, I gave them to him. And I think that he feels like that they're not being heard, and he wants a little more attention paid to the fact that they're in a lawsuit and that they are really trying to get some of these issues resolved.
You live in Manchester, and you'll remember the controversial project right across Manchester Inn, where folks were upset at the height of, of the building. The Board of County Commissioners hated that project. In fact, we voted, when we were still in the appeals process, to deny it. Our denial was later overturned in, in Superior Court, and the current and passport of county commissioners, along with the county, had been named in a civil lawsuit, saying that the county commissioners denied that permit because we didn't like the ethnicity of the gentleman who was applying for the permits. We have land use laws in this state that allow projects to vest very early. And one of the things that I've learned as county commissioner is that sometimes projects get vested and move forward that you don't like. But when you're in my seat, you have to protect the county from liability, and you have to protect the county from, from risks associated with doing things that aren't legal. I don't like the gravel operation. I've worked tirelessly with the Suquamish Tribe, building a partnership to help restore the health of, of Chico Creek. We've done a lot of great restoration partnerships in combination with the Country Club, and in fact, the tribe has dedicated $600,000 or $800,000 to the county. They gave us a grant to help remove one of our county cohorts on Kitty Hawk. It's not every day the tribe gives the county money. In fact, it hasn't happened in this county in quite a long time, but it shows our partnership. But I share that with you because, you know, when you're, when you're service county commissioner, what you learn is that, you know, development, a lot of people wish that, you know, there wouldn't be any development anywhere. And that's just not reality. We're going to have development, and the hard work that I have as commissioner and our board, and I think for all elected officials, is how do you do development the right way? This was a frustrating process. I, you know, I know a lot of the neighbors are frustrated. There's not much I can do, and frankly, if Abby is sworn in as commissioner next year, there's really nothing she can do either, except for look at our county code and make sure that we correct the, you know, the elements of the code that allow this project to move forward the way it did, just like what we did in Manchester. Yeah, I, I got a little hot under the collar with Jack Stanfill over the weekend. He came protesting at our YMCA event, and I told him point-blank that I felt that this was a family event, and he could bring his protest signs down here, but when we're doing a lot of good for families and for kids and for seniors in our community, that it, you know, protesting in front of, in front of the county courthouse every day of the week, which is what they've been doing for several months, I can take it. But I don't like the fact that folks are running around with big signs, you know, talking about a project in front of a bunch of kids and seniors at a day that should have been reserved for celebrating, bringing our community together.
Well, I heard that story a little different. What I heard when he called me...
Oh, you weren't there.
Was that the signs were never brought in, that he specifically...
They were.
Went up to Josh and asked. And I actually asked my treasurer, who was a donor, if they were, and he said that they were not.
Yeah.
So, really, what he told me happened, and it may be a disagreement on how it went down, but basically, that he went up and asked for an explanation because he had not been answered in weeks. He hadn't been answered, and that he was frustrated about that. Now, whether, you know, Josh felt like that was an invasion or whatever, I, I don't know. But something that I think is really a problem, and we're seeing it not only with this group, is that the Department of Community Development has to start providing a little more consistent guidelines, whether it's this group or, you know, the neighbors that are concerned with the gun range or the gun range. It seems like there's a lot of people and a lot of neighbors fighting over the fact that the Department of Community Development has not been consistent. And it's not as simple as saying, "Well, I agree with these people and I disagree with these people." The problem is that they're not enforcing, they're not enforcing the regulations consistently all the way around. So, when these people out here are protesting, what they're protesting about is the fact that the developer was allowed to not identify one of the wetlands. That's what they're protesting about.
That's under, is that under review right now?
Yes.
That's my understanding.
Because they finally got the attention of the Department of Community Development to do that.
Because that's my understanding. There has been a response, but there is, it is in the process of being...
Within the day or two prior to this.
It is being, it's in response to being done.
I just, I'm seeing the department basically putting itself up for liability risks quite frequently, and I think that this is something that we're going to have to start resolving because it's not, that department's been broken for a while, and we need to find some, some ways to fix that.
Is there a similar complaint that you've heard?
In terms of...
The Department of Community Development inconsistencies there or a lag behind when things are...
Well, I don't know the comment about the Rifle Revolver Club, but how the department's been inconsistent. Here's what I know, is when I became commissioner in 2007, we had a very dysfunctional department. Part of that was the fact that, I think we, the department went through about 10 directors in roughly 10 years. You know, you're not going to have stability in any organization if the leader of that organization is going in and out every couple of months. And, and our board went, day after the election, when we met to interview folks, the person we hired, Larry Keaton, who's now, I believe, the longest-serving planning director for Kitsap County since Ron Perkowitz. We hired Larry because, number one, he wasn't a planner. Now, my opponent at the NAACP forum said that we probably should have hired a planner, but I'm glad we hired an Army car because we needed somebody to get in and get this organization reshaped. I think we would have made more progress if we weren't enveloped in the economic downturn, but we have made progress in this department. And I'll give you one example. If you look at our conditional use permits, when I came in office in 2007, there were developers and, and citizens of this county waiting to get a hearing in front of our hearing examiner in 2007, who submitted their projects in 2004. There was a three-year backlog. That backlog doesn't exist anymore. There is a reasonable amount of time when you submit for a conditional use permit to get in front of the hearing examiner. We have gone through methodically with elements of the code in our zoning chapter. We went through, and we have increased the efficiency in the department because we took a lot of permits that were requiring either public hearings or administrative conditional use permits, and we outright permitted them. We did that working closely with our advisory group, made up of a lot of good leaders in the development community. Moving forward next year, what, what I believe should be the core element of our planning docket is continuing to clean up our county code and build efficiencies. So, I, I think, I think DCD has improved. Is it where I want it to be? Absolutely. No. But we've made steady progress, and I think anybody who works in the development community will say so. And I think they'll say that there's more progress to be made and I look forward to working with folks that are the users of DCD to see it through. But, you know, the folks that are in the planning department, it's a tough job and I think, I think they really try hard to get it right. And in terms of inconsistencies, I think the vast majority of folks that are in DCD are trying to do a good job. I do.
I'm going to follow up, if I could, on the frustrations and the complexity of the job of the commissioner.
Yeah. And touch-
There's frustrations.
Retouch on the issue that was just recently brought up with Kitsap Rifle Club-
Sure.
And the role that the prosecutor attorneys played recently.
Yeah.
My question to both of you, and I'm going to ask Abby to go first because I'm interested in the newcomers' view of this, is what is the role of the Board of Commissioners in actions that the prosecutor attorney's office takes, be it who they might pursue or cases they might pursue or tactics that can be used? What do you feel? And the reason I'm asking this is because the supporters of the Rifle Club came up to the commissioner's office recently and asked for their support and looked into the issue. So-
Well, that was one of the things that, they were another group that was protesting the Department of Community Development as well. And I've had all these groups contact me, so I know that there's problems within the Department of Community Development that go far beyond single-family homes and things like that.
I guess, I guess if I want to just make sure, apart from specifically my question, is in this specific issue, let's say, obviously, there's a case pending. What do you feel is the options of the Board of Commissioners in that situation?
Well, the prosecutor acts independently. I mean, that's, that really is how it does have to be. The county commissioners did, you know, endorse that lawsuit and have decided that they're going to sign on to that. I personally think that I'm seeing this in a lot of areas, that these things, these neighborhood issues could have been handled much further back if the commissioners had taken a more active role when people like that, the people that are outside picketing, come to them. I think the problems that we're having is that these inconsistencies with the Department of Community Development are not being resolved early on. The code enforcement is not enforcing some of these issues for whatever reason and then we're ending up in a lawsuit. This isn't like this just happened yesterday and it's the same thing with this issue out here. These aren't things that just popped up yesterday. These people have been trying to get someone's attention for a very long time. And I'm not sure that I would back the lawsuit. I question why code enforcement couldn't just have handled this in the beginning. I think the lawsuit is a stretch on how this could have been handled and unfortunately, now it's going to cost the taxpayers because I think it could have been handled much earlier.
So, I think there are a couple of parts of your question I want to make sure I answer. First, prosecutor is a separately-elected official. I think that's pretty clear. Under Washington state law, when you're looking at an enforcement action, including enforcement action for land use violations, that sole authority rests with the county prosecutor. The county commissioners haven't endorsed this lawsuit. What we have said is that the legal obligation rests with the prosecutor and I worked with my Board of Commissioners about a year and a half ago to transfer the property to the Rifle and Revolver Club as part of our land swap to complete the new Berry Hill Heritage Park because I really believed that we needed a safe place for people to shoot in central Kitsap. And having known past and present members of the gun club, I felt that the club was being operated in a, you know, safe, legal fashion. The commissioners would not have transferred that property if they knew otherwise. After that transfer took place, there has been a significant increase in complaints from neighbors living next to the club saying that the use has expanded, that their, that the sound has increased significantly, that work has, you know, been done out there without permits. I don't know what the answer is. I don't, I don't know if those allegations are factual or not. We have a judge that is now looking into it and will make that determination. Is it frustrating that there's a lawsuit? Well, I haven't met somebody who likes filing lawsuits yet unless you're an attorney. I don't think anybody likes being guarded and I wish that we had a situation where, where you didn't have neighbors arguing with neighbors. But having talked to people on all sides of this issue, you know, this is a, this is a real difficult one, Louis. You know, I talked to somebody who, you know, moved out to the, you know, moved out to the neighborhood about five years ago and they said, "You know, the Rifle and Revolver Club, it's so loud." And I told them, I said, "Well, it's been there 80 years longer than you have. The county can't do anything about that." If there's been an illegal expansion, that's a separate issue. And really, there's, you know, there's different determinations on whether or not there has been illegal expansion or not.
You had not heard complaints before the land swap occurred, is that what you said?
Right.
Okay.
My question is, why didn't, Department of Community Development will come, take aerial photos if they have to, to find inconsistencies in how you built your home or if you expanded your home? What I'm asking is, why on earth don't we know? That's what I want to know, is why has it come to a lawsuit? Why is it that they can't go in there and say, "The range is safe"? I mean, this is, this is where it should have started at, is deciphering that the range was indeed safe. And I'm not saying that I think it is or it isn't. What I'm saying is that that's the first step, not a lawsuit.
Well, I think what the prosecutor will tell you is that through code enforcement, they asked for access, that they, that they weren't given access. You know, the satellite imagery, a lot of folks have looked at. It looks like there's been an expansion if you base off the satellite imagery. Commissioner Bauer had gone out to the club last Friday and, you know, and said, you know, where it looks like things have been expanded, that, you know, there was some clearing but that they aren't shooting there. This is, this is just a very confused issue and it's not black and white, you know, and I think this is an issue where, you know, the members of the gun club thought that they were, and, you know, you cannot, under state law in Washington, DCD can't demand to come on your property even if they think there's a code violation. They have to be given access unless, unless a judge serves and puts an injunction in place saying that DCD must be given access. So, I think the prosecutor feels that they tried to get access, they were denied it. That's why they're going through the courts. I think the Rifle and Revolver Club feels that, you know, that they did, that they were asked to give, you know, access, but all that they asked for was to schedule an appointment so that they could close down the club, you know? Yeah, are there elements of a big misunderstanding? Certainly. But, you know, it's frustrating. I'm frustrated and, you know, and I hope this gets worked out, but unfortunately, you know, there's been a lawsuit filed and I would have liked to have seen, seen things turn out differently before getting to this point. Anybody else?
No, I'm just making sure you-
No, I've got it.
We're actually, we're actually about to add an hour right now, so what I'd like to do is give you both a closing statement. Abby, why don't you go first and it'll take about three minutes to anything maybe that we haven't mentioned and if you'd like to say again or a parting shot to this group right here. And please, and thank you before we even do that. Thank you for coming back again. I'm really glad we got you two candidates and-
Thank you as well. You picked right. You picked us both for the primary and we made it through, so that's good. Really, I just, in closing statements, I really, I want people to look at the clear differences between Josh and I. And I really, I don't think that it is derogatory or mean to say that there are, there are clear differences in our approaches for how we think the government needs to be handled. I'm very disappointed that department heads cannot show benchmarks for their projects, how they've impacted the public and where they need to be cut. I think it needs to be very clear where we're going to start cutting. And I think that the department heads, that's their job to give that to the county commissioners and if they cannot, then we have to go in there and we have to structure that for the public out. I was very upset when people from the Citizens Budget Committee contacted me and said that they were no longer needed because they felt that their solutions weren't, weren't actually heard. I think we need answers for this. It works very well to say, "We're going to work collaboratively with everyone." And I think that works great on a lot of these projects. But the problem comes down to, when we're faced with this final budget, what are we going to cut and how are we going to cut it? Either the departments are going to come forward and they're going to say, "Look, this is where we think we need to cut and this is where we think it would most hurt the public. This is where it would be, you know, the most beneficial if we left these services." That needs to happen and I'm just not seeing it as I'm watching these budget hearings. You know, we've got, we've got two members on that panel that are asking point-blank questions that aren't getting answered. And what was disturbing to me was that literally every one to two minutes, whenever the citizen on, on that panel asked, "What are the 7% to 9% cuts and how's that going to impact the public?" Either the department head or one of the commissioners said, "Oh, well, that's okay. Don't worry about it. We'll just discuss that in the parking lot." And it got to be almost laughable because I'm sitting there thinking, "Someone has to step up and take accountability for these decisions." And so, I think that that's the difference. I don't feel comfortable talking about a lot of these parks, projects and things when we're asking the citizens to basically fund them. And it always comes about in a roundabout way that the taxpayers end up happening to fund something extra that they left out. And I think that people need to be aware of that and stop believing that things are free when they're not. And I am perfectly comfortable throwing out the facts for people, whether it's on the environmental impacts on the Rolling Hills Golf Course or extra costs that might be associated with the YMCA. I think that that needs to be there for the public so that they really understand what we're dealing with. And so, they don't get this commissioners-to-the-citizens, "Can we talk taxes?" or June 10th article because I think that they can't afford it right now. They can't afford any more right now. And so, that's, that's the difference. Thank you.
I've talked to a lot of people over the past year that have been campaigning for reelection and I think one of the things that's striking is when I'm in our cities and I explain to people that I'm county commissioner, Josh Brown, and I explain the role that the county provides for all residents of the county, not just unincorporated. The number-one reaction I get from people is, "Gosh, you know, I wish our city was operating more like the county." You know, if you look at our organization, we get a lot of things done and we have a professional group of elected officials, separate directors and employees to provide basic government services. And every day that I go to work, I look at how can the county deliver services in a cost-effective manner? Our budget has shrunk in the general fund from 93 million to 89, to 79 million, which is what we need to adopt for next year, a $14 million reduction in four years. And I think most people would say that the priorities of government are being funded and we're being thoughtful about where we're making decisions. And the county hasn't gone out when we could have, like other counties are doing, like King County's currently doing, with a sales tax increase. We have said, "We're going to work really hard to live within our means" and that's what we're doing every day that I go to work. Now, I'm proud of what we've been able to get done and, you know, it's, I think when I ran four years ago, you know, looking back on that experience, I benefited from having been raised in this community, from having a family that, you know, where public service was very important, getting an excellent education, working in commercial real estate and getting practical business experience, working with somebody who had, had, really been a leader in his industry for many years. And when I returned home to Kitsap County, I think the last thing that I thought about doing was running for county commissioner. But I wanted to get involved because I really felt I had the experience, that I had the education and that I could bring personal qualities to move our community forward. And I believe I've done that. And if the public, you know, thinks that it's time to make a change, all I can do is thank people for the four years of opportunity serving our community because I know in my heart that this community is a better place because of my leadership. And I believe in my heart that we have done everything we can to be a responsible public agency. And I inherited a lot of messes. You mentioned the harborside condos, you know, the way that the county had our labor contracts and the budgeting before. There were a lot of things that we needed to turn around and we've turned around a lot. And this county is a model for fiscal responsibility and for delivering services in this community